And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you.
Say that again? Yeah, yeah, I think we may need to resize that.
This is one that Lenny's son-in-law gave us off the one ship, but he gave one to fire off though. I thought he gave one there.
Oh, I doubt it.
It might be.
It might be.
Alright.
It's been here since.
But I might, I might be wrong. I thought, I thought he gave them to, but I can't remember.
Okay.
But if he did, I don't know.
Alright.
Alright.
Let's get started. Alright, um, I would like a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from the first, uh, the tenth of January twenty twenty-two. You have a motion? Who was it, Mark? And second? Cindy? And, uh, any comments, corrections, changes? No? All in favor of accepting the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-two, say aye.
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 While opposed, say no. Motion carries. At this point, I'll open it up for public comment. I'll make a public comment received from, uh, a resident, uh, yesterday. Uh, there's been vandalism again of the Speculator sign coming up Route thirty, uh, going north. Someone has stolen the snowmobile, uh, icon off of there. We will do our best to, uh, get a replacement up there, but seriously, if anybody knows who took it, would they please put it back? This is the second time in a couple of months that it's been, it's been vandalized. Um, okay, so, uh, we'll do a report from DPW. So Roger?
Alright.
Would you be so kind?
Uh, last month, plowing and sanding. Uh, we cleaned a few dishes when we had time. We've been flooding skate rink every, every morning that it's cold. Working on ski trails, trying to get them open. Three years out there. Friday, we go constantly out there again tomorrow after his other cycles. Uh, JR and Lenny were out there last week, knocking down some brush. Uh, we have to move snow in the back every now and then at school and the clerk's office because it builds up too high, fire hall. Garbage, recycles, a little bit of shoulder work once in a while. Uh, anytime there's low branches from snow or whatever, we get them cut off and out of the way. Uh, we cut our snow banks if, if the banks get too high. We haven't had to do that yet this year. We haven't had that much snow. And sidewalks and fixed potholes. And that's pretty much the same thing for the next month. I don't see anything else on that list. As I already said, garbage, rink, sidewalks, plowing, and sixty-year activities, pretty much same stuff. Then we get through winter. Uh, I've, I've submitted my new CHIPS paperwork for our plowing and everything. Hopefully, everything will go through and never come back. And then everything else as far as the CHIPS is on track right now. We did, I just moved the sidewalk to two.
So what's our balance with CHIPS?
I can't tell you exactly, but it's like ninety-two, ninety-three, it's going in there.
Okay. Okay, ninety-two, ninety-three thousand. So, Barbara, you know, I'm always good for adding something to your list. So thank you very much for having Jim Rumsey, Trustee Rumsey and I come and, and visit the shop. Um, as you know, I've been concerned about the, uh, the organization and, and the tight space that we have down there. Um, there is an abundance of supplies and for the most part, they are organized on some shelves, but there's even more that requires organization and that's on the, that's on the upper level. Um, and as we discussed, uh, there really needs to be an addition of, um, shelving that you said you had available from the prior, uh, village hall. There has to be some sort of inventory tracking system so that we know how much is there, where it is, is it upstairs, is it downstairs? And then really to go through and remove everything that's no longer being used. So all the lights have been converted to LEDs. So those other lights, can we donate them, get rid of them?
I don't know if anybody still uses them, but we'll, I'll check before I just toss them out.
Right, and, and if there are any old vehicle parts or machinery parts, there's a lot of boxes there that are unmarked. So even, even just labeling so that it's efficient to go in and, and take care of things.
Most of the time when we get rid of the truck, we send them all the extra parts in the books manuals with them.
Okay.
I'm sure there may be some parts up there that we don't need.
Yeah, I think it needs a good, it needs a good going through and, and to see where we can open up space, floor space. And I realize that it's winter and that we keep vehicles in there and things like that, so it's a bit of a challenge. But I, I think with, with some reorganization in there, we should be able to do that. Um, in addition, we talked about your files, um, that have probably been in there, ad infinitum, since the beginning of time.
Well, I, uh, when I first took over, I went through all the files and got rid of the long stuff.
Okay. Okay.
But there is stuff over ten years in there now.
Yeah, so it's been requested, I've requested that we keep ten years down at the garage. The rest, go through, see what we need to keep, bring it up here and we'll put it in the, the newly cleaned archives.
I have the retention policy up here, so if you need that, that's click through while we're away.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll do that. So, so that's, that's one thing that you need to add to your thirty, sixty, ninety day life.
Alright.
Um, the next thing is, is I had several reports about the absence of snowmobile barriers and signs. And there were quite a few people riding through the village, um, on the sidewalks, which of course we are trying to avoid. And there are village regulations against that. Um, in speaking with the sheriff's department, they said that they have a very hard time citing people because they did stop some without the signage. So, um.
Well, I was hoping this year we wouldn't need it because it's a, it's a pain for the guy that blows it to get out more.
Sure.
And our sidewalks have been there this year, so I thought it's how we should have did, but that didn't work.
I know. No, so.
So they're off now.
Yep, so we have to put those out. Um, just double check that there are enough of those smaller signs that say no snowmobiles on the.
Yeah, I ordered a few more today, but we've got like five left over there. Not to take them up on hold.
Please.
I'm gonna have to get them.
Yep, and then we continue our, uh, prayer for snow. And then, um, as I mentioned during the public comment, the snowmobile was stolen from the Speculator sign on Route thirty. And in speaking with you, between you and Tree, we would get that, uh, we would get that replaced.
But I don't know if he has anyone painted he likes, but it's not, I haven't taken one off.
Okay, so if we can, if we can get that up in, in time for summer season. I'm only kidding. Okay, um, any questions or comments from the board? Jim Rumsey?
Um, Roger, um, when we signed our, um, the budget today, there was, uh, items noted for, um, batteries and a number of supplies. About how many batteries do you get in the box that you've ordered?
I, I think there's thirty-six in each box.
Thirty-six, thirty-six, is that what I heard?
Alright, I'd have to look. It doesn't say, but he is working it. Either twenty-four or thirty-six, depending on which type I buy.
Okay. And you'll use those this winter season?
Uh, we'll use them up quick. We use them in our, um, our flashlights and our garage door openers. And there's tons of stuff over there that we use batteries for unfortunately.
Okay, and do you change those regularly? Like, like?
Right, when they go dead.
Oh, well, well, sometimes before they go dead, like garage door battery. I, I, you know, I'm just thinking of smoke a lot.
No, just the one in the door, we never change the car.
Alright, so long as we can get in and, and use that. So yes, Trustee Doniker, I see that finger.
Roger, uh, uh, any news on the, uh, purchases of the new truck?
Not yet, no, I'm still working on it. I'm gonna call a couple more dealerships and Mangino hasn't called me back yet. Uh, got a message from the secretary. He said he was gonna call me tomorrow. I don't know what he has to say yet, but we're still working on it.
Okay.
They say we're gonna be hard pressed to find one.
Doesn't have to be green.
No, I know that, but I had a dealership tell me that every truck they have in the lot, people are paying ten percent above list.
Okay.
Well, they don't sell them for cheaper rate.
Right.
So, you're anything to pay above and beyond what it says or then it's sold to somebody else.
Just, you know, you can order the truck to Mangini's because they're a state contract. If not.
Yes, I think I can do that.
And, uh.
But we could be waiting quite a while. If we order, it would be waiting is all. But I'm, I'm sure I can order one.
Alright, I, I would just order one and not worry about it. When it gets here, it gets here.
Right.
Alright, um, well, he's supposed to call me tomorrow, so I'll find out more about it tomorrow.
Okay. So, uh, we did hear today from, uh, Auction International that the two thousand Sevi twenty-five hundred Chevy pickup truck with plow, um, had a high bid of seven thousand three hundred dollars, which is four, five, six, five thousand dollars more than what we thought.
Yeah, I thought, I thought around three thousand. When it went to fifty-three hundred, I thought that was great. And I checked it this morning, it was seventy-three hundred, couldn't believe it.
So that's great. So, um, what we need to do is I need a motion to accept the bid from Auction International of seven thousand three hundred dollars for the two thousand Sevi, two thousand seven Chevy pickup with plow. So may I have a motion?
Hello.
Hello.
Everybody's doing it. So Rebecca and Cindy, uh, any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
And I'll let them know, uh, right after the meeting to proceed.
Terrific. Terrific, thank you. Thank you, Mark, for putting all that together. And that seventy-three hundred dollars will go into the, um, the capital reserve for equipment. Yep, good. Um, yes, Rebecca.
Um, another question for Roger. Some residents are wondering if the road between Wells and coming up through Speculator, is that on the docket to be fixed at some point?
I, I know somebody had a petition out for them to do it this year and they claim they're going to. Whether they do or not, I don't know.
I did put a call into, uh, Dean Carnavale, um, who is our, uh, DOT contact, and he did not get back to me.
Um, I read, I read they're gonna, they're gonna do from, uh, Wells or where Route eight goes right into Speculator this year. I think the cost is over a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And the offer this year too. I don't know that back though.
Yeah, they do it every ten years. So that'd be, that would be great. Okay.
Also, I guess we purchased a sled, Roger. Can you tell us what that's being used for?
Uh, JR purchased a sled because they were going in on the ski trail to cut brush and stuff. They used it to drag the weed eater and the chainsaw and the gas.
Yeah, that's what I thought might be going on there. Thank you.
And I made a thing to just pay JR back for the sled that he bought.
Right, he wasn't aware that we had an account at, uh, CJ's.
Yeah, I don't count that.
So there's no sledding going on at DPW.
No, we're not sledding, I'm bad.
Alright, just making sure.
Just, just don't look really good.
Because, because if there is, I'm coming. Okay, good. Alright, Roger, thank you.
And I forgot, uh, the bump-out bulbs and I, they were worth.
Oh. Oh, yes, sorry, LED lights.
Are gonna be about sixty dollars a bulb and we need twelve of them.
Okay, so, so this is our final, our final push for LEDs. So there are twelve decorative lights, uh, twelve bulbs in the decorative lights that we have. And those are sixty dollars a piece to convert them to LEDs. Uh.
It's probably lasts for years and years, so I like that.
Yeah, for twenty years. And, and use less electricity. So.
Yeah, and I, I just forget about your bulbs. JR keeps telling me to look at how many they have left on there and the others told me yesterday. But I know I've got a quarter sixteen, so I don't know how many we have left, but I'll make sure that I get them this week. Sixteen, sixteen.
So that's in the office area. So, so just so.
The office in the hallway.
So just so that the board is clear for the LED lights, there was talk about trying to change the mechanics for the, um, the bulbs in the decorative lights, and that's becoming prohibitive, um, if I understand correctly. The price, the price of doing that.
Well, it, it. Yeah, the price is really high.
Is very high, so.
And then I was told these bulbs should work.
Okay, so.
I'll buy, I'll just buy two with trial and see and then before I buy off well.
Okay. Or see if there's a refund policy.
So I have one. Yeah.
Because we don't want to get stuck with supply chain issues either.
Which didn't ever turn back on us.
No, we're still waiting to hear back on the grant or anything. She had to check whether the company would be useful, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we may, we may want to check, see if we can get all twelve and return them if they don't, if they don't work.
Alright, I'll find out when I call, uh, whether they can return or whatever. So maybe there's a plus or a minus.
Okay. And in, in completing that, if you'll remember when Nancy Burstein was here, uh, the energy circuit rider, we will get points, additional points towards, uh, monies that will further in, improve our energy systems, um, with, with that addition of the, uh, the decorative lights. So that's great. So we still have one or two things to consider, um, as a board as far as energy sources, but that's one thing.
Um.
Great. Uh, yes, Jim?
Did deal with energy. Um, how often are the lights at the ice rink turned on and off?
Well, they're on the timer, but the guys feel we should leave them on because it's dark in there. So we've been leaving them on since they're LED and they don't burn a lot. But I can put them on the timer where they go off during the day. But even during the day, it's sort of gloomy in there, so we've been leaving them on. So I don't know how the board feels about that.
Well, what time do they get turned on?
I have the timer set for four till eleven.
Four PM till eleven? Well, I think that it closes like by nine or ten.
Oh, we always.
That's what the signage said.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you need to, you need to shut them off earlier.
Okay.
You need to shut them off earlier. And I did get a note from Eric Holvig, who is running some clinics, hockey clinics for our kids. Um, there is going to be a session on Saturday morning and he requested some good flooding, um, of the, of the pavilion Friday and Saturday at Los More.
I mean, we flood it every morning.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I told him. So I just wanted to make you extra.
Just as cold enough to have a funny cold.
Now I think it'll be clo- cold on Friday and Saturday as well. So if we can make sure that that's, uh, that's done.
Alright.
Alright, good. Thank you, Roger.
Um, Jeanette?
Yes.
Um, question to Roger. Roger, without, without a lot of snow falling right now and us not doing a lot of plowing, is there some move of foot to get those shelving set up and get things started?
Yeah, we're going to try, but even when we're not plowing, we're flooding skating rink and working on the ski trail and we are down the guys still. So I mean, we don't work on that on off hours, but what, I mean, we haven't been spending a lot of time on it right now. We've been doing the.
If you can move that up in your priority list of things.
Well, I've got.
Get a couple shelves out.
Yeah.
You can do it, Roger.
The priority list I thought was the skating rink.
Yeah, the skating rink is, but, but isn't there only one person who floods the rink? That's not everybody.
But I, I know, but, but we, we. Uh, so like usually two.
Oh, two.
Because there's a lot of hose you have to pull and stuff.
Okay.
But Tree right now is on light duty, so I'm sure he can do us shelter two for us.
Okay, that would be great. And, uh, speaking of being down a person, how many applications have we received?
One so far, but there's been two others that were picked up.
Okay, alright, so.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
So one, one, um, applicant has submitted an application, two more have been picked up. So if we, if we let it run for another two weeks, we'll see what, what comes in. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, so for the third time, third time should be a charge. Run while you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, um, if you would indulge me, Crystal, uh, we will jump to the new agenda and have, uh, Brendan Kennedy from BST, uh, BST and Company, CPAs, who conducted our audit, uh, give us a short overview of the audit findings. And there is no way you are on the lake, Brendan.
No, no, that's, uh, that's Racket Lake right there and that's probably about two feet of ice right now, as you guys can, can imagine. That's our, that's our, our family, uh, camp. It's been in our family for about fifty years.
Nice, nice.
Uh, well, folks, uh, here we are.
Uh, one second, one second. Um, are you able to allow him to put up his?
I can share it on my Zoom thing.
Yes, if you.
Can we do that?
Right, yes, please.
Okay, let me get this, uh, over here. You'd think I'd be pretty versed on, uh, Zoom and all these other tools by now, but slideshow. So folks, I'll, uh, let me just try and share this now. How does that work? Are you guys able to see this?
Beautiful.
Okay, great. Uh, so my name is Brendan Kennedy. I'm a, a partner at BST and Co., CPAs. Uh, we, we're a, uh, a relatively good-sized firm here in the, uh, the capital region. Uh, and, uh, just to go through some of our qualifications, uh, we're, we're about a hundred and ten people. And, uh, government, including villages such as yourself, is just a huge, huge part of our business. Uh, it's basically the only thing that I, that I do. Uh, we have a, we actually have a nice little client base here in the Adirondacks as well. So, uh, and I'll be heading up to Lake Placid tomorrow night. I'm currently working with Saranac Lake and, and Tupper Lake and a few other organizations we, we work with. So I like to say we, we, we love the Adirondacks. And, uh, although I wanted to come up there and, and have some FaceTime with folks, due to COVID and due to scheduling and things, we, we did a lot of the work remotely. However, I have booked a, uh, we, we like to camp. We have a little travel camper. And I have booked a, uh, three nights at Moffett Beach, so I will be there in July to, uh, to terrorize your, your pleasant village.
Great.
So we'll, we'll be out and about.
Good.
Uh, so I've been doing this for a while, uh, and, and this is the, the village's first audit to, to my knowledge, or at least the first audit in a while. Uh, we have a change in administration. We have some, some new, uh, council members, I believe as well, and I know Crystal's new. Uh, so with that, it's, it's not a bad idea to, to do what you did and then combine with the fact that you received a million dollars approximately for a new fire truck. That triggered the audit requirement and, uh, poof, here I am. Uh, so, you know, for being a first-time auditee, I, I would say things went very well. Uh, and, and we'll get into that, but, uh, in, in general, we were, we were engaged to audit your financial statements. So your financial statements are prepared in accordance with US GAAP. And US GAAP is slightly different than what we use to report to the state comptroller's office. It's a little above and beyond the minimum requirements that the state, excuse me, a little, yes, above and beyond what the state requires. So there's some extra stuff we had to do for the basic financial statements. We also did a compliance audit. So your federal program was that, um, uh, program where you, you purchase the fire truck and collectively those are referred to as a single audit, two pieces, the financial and the compliance. Our objective was to obtain assurance that the financial statements were free of material error. Uh, obviously, we can't provide one hundred percent, uh, guarantee. And our focus was certainly not to detect, uh, anything that would be immaterial to the financial statement. So some of those things, you know, if, uh, I, I heard terms like, you know, the sled being used, you know, if some guy used the sled, uh, for non-village business, there's just absolutely no way I'm gonna catch that as, as part of a, a financial statement audit that I was engaged to do. Uh, so with that said, uh, the, the financial statements, there, there's a multiple documents that you should have been provided. Uh, the financial statements, we concluded, I'm just gonna hop around here a little quicker. They encompass your general fund, your water fund, your sewer fund, your capital projects and your governmental activities. What the governmental activities is, is the aggregation of all of those opinions. The key funds, uh, the general fund, the water fund, capital projects, all unmodified opinions. And an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can give you that the financial statements are free of material errors. Very, very commonly, uh, Lake Placid, for example, Saranac Lake, even my town, the town of Bethlehem where I live, just south of Albany, with thirty-three thousand people in it and a ton of resources, they all get this adverse opinion on the governmental activities, which is the aggregation of all your funds. And it also includes a bunch of things that we'd have to pay extra for. I'll get into that. So all of the key funds that you really care about, in my opinion, unmodified, clean, governmental activities is, is an adverse. And the reason it's adverse is US GAAP. And I mentioned that US GAAP is above and beyond what the state requires you to do. US GAAP, those are the standards we're supposed to follow, requires you to report and track infrastructure assets. Very challenging to do. That would include water lines, sewer lines, your treatment plants, uh, roads, culverts. Um, it would be a very comprehensive process to get those. The other thing is your post-employment benefits. That would require you to engage an actuarial specialist. Uh, both of those things would cost the village extra money. And in my personal opinion, and I'm not speaking for BSD, but my opinion, you're not gonna drive any benefit from those items. And so the approach that you've taken to financial reporting, at least from a qualitative perspective, is totally fine. The way I tried to explain it to the mayor, uh, is that, you know, the village gets an A and if you wanted an A+, you'd have to pay extra money that no one would really see any value in. So in my mind, an A is good enough. And like I say at the bottom of this slide, these are the two most common examples of US GAAP departures for small, medium-sized municipalities in, in our hundred-plus portfolio of clients. So, uh, in my opinion, absolutely nothing to worry about. Unmodified opinions on the financial statements on, on your general fund, which is critical, your water, your sewer, that's just terrific, okay?
Great.
Uh, the program ninety-seven dot oh four, that's the assistance listing, that's your federal grant. We have issued an unmodified opinion on your compliance and on internal control over compliance relative to that program. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take that audit and, and everything, we're gonna combine all that and we're actually gonna submit that to the federal government, uh, as part of our, uh, filing requirements. And then at that point, you will have fulfilled your requirements as it relates to this grant.
Terrific. So Brendan, a, a quick question. Um, with this audit now, if we were to get another federal grant of some size and substance, would we have to go through a similar audit again or is this one good for a number of years?
Uh, if you got, what triggers the audit requirement is when you expend federal funds in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for you guys, uh, uh, you'd have to get a pretty big one, uh, to, to hit that mark again. Uh, so no, it would, it would be, you would have to go start from scratch again.
Okay, and, and we don't have those same audit triggers if we get grants through New York State?
That's correct. You don't have those triggers. And so sometimes a lot of people are getting EFC funding for water and sewer infrastructure projects.
Right.
A lot of times that's state funding.
Yeah.
Uh, and so you really, we, we, you know, before we start an audit process, we definitely have to check with EFC to make sure there's no federal component. Uh, and I'm not sure what we have in the pipeline. I just know they're, they're common, common, uh, funding sources for municipalities. But no, no audit requirement. So, um, and, and we can talk about that, you know, whatever the board wants to do. I, I, I'm kind of of the opinion that, uh, I don't like to do audits unless it's required, but there may be something you guys want us to do from a, just a annual basis, whether it's kick the tires or, or, uh, who knows, come in and pop in in July when I'm up there and, uh, scare your DPW guy. He seems pretty nice. But, uh, you know, whatever, whatever it is exactly you need or want, uh, going forward, I, I wouldn't recommend necessarily doing an audit the way I did, uh, if, if you're not required to.
Can you audit supplies?
Sure, we can audit, we can audit anything. Uh, you know, we can, uh, there's, there's a lot of different things you can do. When you, when you do an audit in accordance with, uh, the AICPA, it, it's like you gotta follow all these silly kinds of rules. Whereas, you know, commonly, if you're not required to follow the AICPA audit requirements, it'd be much easier just to, you know, select a bunch of invoices and make sure you're following things. I mean, that's like a half day's worth of work versus, versus a week.
Okay, good to know, good to know.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, and, and always, even though we're done, I mean, you guys are still, you know, I, I, I know the audit's done, but you're still welcome to bounce ideas off me, whether, uh, you know, whether it's substantive in nature or, you know, if it's just a quick question. Uh, and there's a few things that I'll, I'll, I'll get into that I'll, I'll, I'll probably debrief with Crystal and, uh, and, and yourself. Just some, uh, accounting nuances that we'll get into, uh, you know, going forward as, as Crystal continues to prepare the AUD. But, uh, and, and we really don't have, this is a, a fairly positive meeting. Uh, and, and certainly we did try, uh, you know, we did confirm all your cash balances with, with, uh, all third parties. Uh, and, and certainly we did try, uh, you know, we did confirm all your cash balances with, with, uh, all third parties. We reviewed the cash reconciliations. We sampled cash receipts to make sure they were adequately supported. You can see here, I, I looked at thirty-five dispersments. Uh, that number is somewhat, uh, important because we, we also tested internal controls over dispersments. Uh, I, I'm a big proponent of validating the money that's going out the door when I conduct an audit of a government. Obviously, it's important to validate what's coming in. But just the same, I want to make sure that every dollar that went out that I'm sampling was adequately supported. It went through the processes and controls that you folks have established. And that, uh, and that it was a, a, at least a quality expense or, you know, I wanted to make sure it wasn't some fancy popcorn maker or something. I wanted to make sure if it, if it was recorded in the water fund, it appeared related to water utilities of that nature or general fund and so on. Uh, we reviewed payroll, uh, we looked at balance sheet transactions, accruals and receivables. And we also do consider fraud in the conduct of our audit. We examine manual journal entries. Uh, if you, if you put your, uh, you know, think back to twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years ago, the Enron was in the news and that kind of changed the way auditors approached things. And we now examine manual journal entries because it's one way that management in theory could cover up a fraud. Uh, we look for, we looked at bank statements. We look for out-of-sequence payments. That's how I've heard some frauds perpetrated at, at other municipalities. Uh, uh, you know, once someone gets their hand on check stock, they can, they can, you know, have a good time. Uh, and also, you know, simple things like inquiries of management and just talking to people as we conduct our audit. You never know what someone's going to say. But, uh, none, none of these tests that we did resulted in, in our awareness of any fraud that we report to you those charged with governance.
Terrific.
You know, so, so in general, general observations here, we received the full cooperation of management. We very much enjoyed working with the mayor and, and Crystal. Uh, we found your records to be in good order. Uh, you know, there, any requests we made was fulfilled. There was nothing that we asked for that wasn't provided or no response to a question that we didn't feel was, uh, was properly fulfilled. There were some adjusting journal entries, uh, and I think these really have to do with the fact that it is your first time being audited. And I wouldn't necessarily call them errors or, or they're certainly not fraud or anything of that nature. It's more accounting adjustments. It's more about cutting off receivables and payables at your end, some things like that that we proposed and we shared with, uh, Crystal and the group. And, uh, going forward, I'm confident that, uh, the village will be able to make those adjustments on an annual basis. So in general, we thought it was a very positive audit, uh, you know. And again, you probably don't need an audit unless you get a good chunk of federal money again. But if there's anything we can help the village with as, as we go forward or any questions or comments, or if there's ever an interest in doing some kind of modified audit, like a lower scope where we focus in on a few issues. We're always happy to, uh, to help. We're, uh, we're usually floating around the Adirondacks here and there. So, uh, and we'd, uh, we'd love to stop by and see you guys.
Terrific, um.
That was it. Uh, if there's any questions, if you think of your question, uh, later tonight, tomorrow, next week, or five months later, uh, my, you guys have my contact information. It's on the last slide here. You're certainly welcome to reach out to me at any point in time. But, uh, I, I thought, uh, you know, given, given the history of Speculator and particularly the last several years and, and whatnot, uh, to, to come out like this is, is a pretty good show of progress.
Yeah, no, that's terrific. And Crystal, thank you.
Yeah, you got a, you guys got a good one with Crystal, so keep her happy.
Well, no, that's a tall order. No, but that's, that's really, uh, that's really terrific considering, uh, how far, how far we've come. So that's very reassuring.
Yeah, it is. You know, government accounting is all about keeping things in the right bucket. And, you know, that, that's what I found. And what, you know, sometimes I, I find things paid out of the wrong fund, whether they did it intentionally or not, or things get deposited in the wrong fund. And it's all about keeping those columns separate. Your water's different than your sewer, your sewer's different than your general. And they all really need to be tra-treated differently. Although I get it, you know, employees may cross over and work in multiple, uh, facets. But, uh, keeping things in the right bucket is key. And, uh, keeping good records like you did is, is what's going to help you. You know, if you're ever audited by OSC, uh, or, or somebody like, like that, they're going to camp out for four months and they're going to find something and, you know, they'll write an audit and, and you take it and you, and you, uh, you know, you implement whatever recommendation. But, uh, it's, where, where you're at now is in a pretty good spot.
Terrific. Any questions for Brendan? Anybody? So you have, you've all been providing copies, um, of the audit reports, of the financial reports, of the compliance, um, et cetera. And, uh, Crystal and I went through quite extensively with Brendan and, uh, answered any additional questions that we have. So I think we're set. We will, uh, look forward to seeing you, uh, over at Moffitt's. Come by and see us. We'll give you a cup of coffee.
It'll be, uh, yeah, in, in July. It'll be a little warmer than it is.
All right.
It'll kind of, it'll kind of look like the background of my screen, I'm hoping, so.
Excellent, excellent.
All right, guys. You have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and I'll, I'll return that sign on Route Thirty. Sorry about that.
Oh, all right, good, thanks.
Okay, bye now.
All right, bye-bye. Crystal, again, uh, kudos to you for, for really doing a great job. I, I knew that that was a little harrowing, um, and especially considering where we've come and, uh, over the last, the three years together, two and a half years together. It's, it's, um, it's really remarkable that, that we got such a good, uh, audit report. And you guys are here, and you guys are here at the fire department with your, uh, fire truck.
Yes.
Yes.
That was the big one, making sure we do that correctly.
Correct.
Um, I've heard that my report's.
Okay.
Um.
Do you want me to start with the resolution?
Um, yeah, you can start with it.
Okay. So there, there is a resolution. May I share?
Yes.
Um, share screen. And, oh, did I even open it?
I don't know. Back to the chair.
I got it. I got it. So desktop, should be desktop. Allows him to share. Can you see? Can you see all that stuff? No, no. No, no.
Um. Go ahead and share.
Yeah, go ahead and share, sorry. No, usually I can do that.
Share what?
Files. It's behaving badly.
Um, it positions the resolution to appoint election factors for the, um.
For the election.
For the March election.
Right. So the election will be held on Tuesday, March fifteenth, um, in the village hall from twelve noon till nine PM. We are, uh, electing two trustees, uh, this time around.
And to be in accordance with the general election law, uh, we will be appointing, um, two elections beforehand for March fifteenth. Um, Tony Morrison and Shirley Smith have agreed to, uh, the election factors again this year. Currently, we do not have an alternate Tom Bassington, and it is a fact that he has indicated that he's not been personally contended.
He is not.
Yeah, he is not.
Okay, so we will need to find an alternate somewhere because last year we had the issue where.
We did, and there are other stipulations. If we have like a, an emergency, we can appoint, like, I could appoint Tracy to be an alternate.
All right, that's fine, just in case of an emergency.
Yeah, and in, in case of, of an emergency.
Okay.
Um, so there are some things like that. If we find out, um, like, a couple of weeks before, uh, before the election that like Shirley or Tony can't do that, then we can always appoint another one. We just have to do this one now, um.
Right.
To have it set up.
Yeah, okay.
But we have, we do have a little bit of, um, leeway there.
All right, then, uh, may I have a motion to accept the appointment of election Inspector Shirley Smith and Tony Morrison? Uh, Jim Rumsey, second?
Mark.
Mark, all in favor? Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, Crystal, the rest of your report.
Clear the rounds. Um, a couple of just really quick things. Um, all WQ's and ten ninety-nines have been completed and, um, either reeled out or distributed. Um, I believe if anybody, uh, Cindy or, or Rebecca, haven't you seen their yet, their job? Please let me know. I think I mailed, uh, Rebecca's. Um, all quarterly reports and yearly reports for the state IRS and labor's conflict have been submitted. Um, this year, I did mail in the IRS, um, yearly, um, like the, the WQs and the ten ninety-nines. But I believe by next year, we're going to have to start doing it, submitting it online. So I'll have to work on making that set up.
No.
Um, yeah, I think it's going to be mandatory to send it in online, submit it online.
Okay.
Um, for those planning to run for trustee petitions, those will drop off between February first and February eighth. Um, February first is actually next, uh, to say, I believe.
And how many petitions, uh, how many signatures are needed?
Um, well, I think it's about twelve. It's on the packet that I hand out. I can't remember exactly.
I think my packet said sixteen.
Oh, sixteen. Yeah, there we go, sixteen, sorry. Um, it's based on, um, how many registered, uh, voters we have, so.
Great.
Um, a certain amount. Um, then just, otherwise, just a proposal for the financial report and the abstract.
All right. Good. Uh, any questions or comments for Crystal before we approve the, uh, vote to approve the abstract and the financial report? No, okay. So, um, I would like a motion to approve abstract number fifteen.
Someone?
Rebecca, second?
Mark.
Mark, um, any comments or questions on any of the, uh, abstract items? We, uh, cleared up the sled. I actually had the same, same question, what was going on with the sled. All right, so all in favor of approving, um.
Jeanette?
Yes.
Um, again, going back to the highway department, the issue would be that there's no inventory control, there's very little, uh, supervision of what Roger's ordering. And, um, seventy-two batteries for flashlights. Um, actually, it's a hundred and forty-four batteries. Uh, that's a lot of flashlights and stuff. I, I just wonder, you know, and, and why all of a sudden we need this many? And, and I mean, this is nickel-dime stuff, but this goes through the entire budgeting process. He just submits what he wants. We paid thirty-seven dollars for a shovel or some other things. I, I, I don't find, um, I, I'm a little uh, missed that, uh, how much stuff he had sitting on top of stuff, on top of stuff, and not knowing what was in the bottom boxes. So I, 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 he ought to be brought into accountability or something so that you can, um, so that we, we can know that what we're signing is, is, is appropriate.
Okay, I did ask, I did ask Roger, and I'll, I'll make it more formally known to him, that for the next six months, he's got to put his brakes on. So we'll review before any purchases are made. I'll, uh.
Thank you.
Crystal? Chris, Crystal and I will make sure that, that we go through any and all purchases before he goes forward, uh, to do that. Because you're right, there, there has to be, there has to be some accountability because there are just boxes and boxes and cans and cans and bottles and bottles of, of stuff. And it, it would be good to know, you know, just because the comment is, well, we use that. Well, how much is being used? And what seasons is it being used? And what's the life expectancy of the, of the materials that are ordered? Do they live indefinitely or are they useful indefinitely or do they wear out or expire? Um, so I think that's going to be, uh, important to do.
And as a trustee.
You did, you did speak to someone the other day. I thought about an inventory system.
Yes, and there are systems out there that can manage. Um, what they are, I don't know, but, um, they are out there for managing inventory. And Crystal, I apologize to you in advance for saying we're going to make your job harder trying to rein in public works. It's tough, I understand.
It's actually not my job to rein in public works.
No, no.
It's my job.
Yeah, it's, it's Jeanette's job, but, but, but you have to do a lot of footwork or pencil work, whatever. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, uh, what I would ask of the board is if you know of any inventory systems, if you know of any people who use inventory systems, or there's a way that we can build our own on an Excel spreadsheet. I've got some family members who are whizzes at that sort of thing. Um, it, it does need to have a handle on it. Okay.
In my experience, it also depends on the person knowing how to input into it and being willing to use it. So that would be another component before we spend money on getting a system that might just sit there.
Well, I'm hoping that we can get a homemade one, you know, an easy enough homemade one that's, that's relatively simple to plug and play. So, um, I think I had the motions for the abstract.
Yeah.
And we voted to approve the, all in favor of, um, paying abstract number fifteen, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. And now I'd like a motion to approve financial report number seven, uh, of December. Cindy, uh, second?
Second.
Rebecca, any comments or questions on the financial report? Okay, hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries to accept the financial report. Crystal, thank you for that. Um, we'll quickly go through, um, old business. So the first is a COVID nineteen update. And, uh, we continue here quite a bit of that on the news. So, um, at this point, there is no county data available on the New York State Department of Health website. They, it looks like they've stopped, uh, tracking that. Um, I have also not received any updates, uh, since the beginning of January on any cases within Hamilton County. So I hope true to form, it is peaked and now Omnicron is, is, uh, waning. Uh, test kits have been a question and I've gotten a few calls on that. Hamilton County Department of Health is no longer doing testing for COVID. They will hand out, uh, ten over-the-counter test kits every morning at ten AM along with educational materials. Uh, an individual must call the Department of Health and register to receive a test kit. If you happen to be number eleven, you can get a kit the following day. So only ten kits are, are given out at a time. And those who test positive are required to notify the Department of Health of that positive result, but not of the negative result. And only one test kit is given to each symptomatic individual. So if you want to have some in your pocket, you can't do it that way. Um, federal government has begun distributing, uh, rapid COVID tests, uh, on January nineteenth through the US Postal Service. Those can be obtained by registering at www.covidtest.gov. Four test kits are given per household. You must apply for these as these are not automatically delivered. Um, one thing that I found of interest, uh, is that the CDC issued a statement on MMWR COVID cases and hospitalizations by COVID nineteen vaccination status and previous COVID diagnosis for California and New York. So we are part of a study. Um, California and New York represent almost twenty percent of the country's population. So it's a, it's a pretty large sample. The highlights of that is that during the Delta wave, data was collected between May and November twenty-twenty-one. So this is, is involving Omnicron. So during the Delta wave, both COVID vaccination and surviving a prior infection showed that it, those both provide a protection against infection and hospitalization from COVID nineteen. Scientists reviewed data from New York and California to determine the level of protection offered by the vaccines. offered by the vaccines, previous infection, or if you had both a vaccine and an infection. And what they found is that, uh, those who were previously infected with or without vaccination, as well as those who were vaccinated, had the greatest protection. So, um, they are acknowledging, uh, immunity, natural immunity for this. In California, they went on to further look at the risk of hospitalization and death. Uh, New York did not provide that information, but in California, they did, and they found the same thing to be true. So natural immunity, vaccination, or vaccination with an infection, all provided the same level of protection against COVID cases. Okay. I thought that that would be heartening news. Um, okay. Uh, McComas, oh, and the shipping of the federal test kits begins in late January. Um, a quick update on the McComas Fire Tower fundraising committee. Uh, this committee consists of Ryan Marshall, Sheriff Stella, and myself. Uh, the total costs for the overall tower are approximately $165,000. As you know, we have received $110,000 in grants, $100,000 from the DEC Smart Growth Grant, and $10,000 from, uh, a generous donation from the Adirondack Foundation. We also have quite a few in-kind donations, uh, from the fellow who's, uh, selling us the tower and erecting the tower. Um, uh, an engineer who helped us with the footing and the foundation has also given us, uh, donation of part of his, uh, time and money. We need to raise $55,000, and to date, we have raised $30,500. So we're getting closer. Um, if anyone is interested in donating towards that, uh, a donation can be made through the village. So, uh, Ryan, uh, the committee will be getting together to see if we can do another push for, um, raising those funds so that that can be installed this summer. The next old business is just a note that we'll start taking a look at some of the sections for, to be updated in the employee handbooks, starting, uh, at our next meeting on, uh, February 14th. Um, Chief O'Brien, thank you for your patience. Come, come here, baby. If you would give us, uh, an update, we haven't talked to the fire department in a while. So, how's it going?
Going, um, yeah. I know one thing that you mentioned in one emails was the old, uh, fire truck.
Yes.
And we, as a department, may as well properly, so we were starting to set, you know, the auction or the, um...
Historical society.
I like it, which is nice not to have it sit out on the side, you know, whether it dorm anymore, but, you know, it is not a, it is a complete fire truck, but it is not a complete original fire truck. Uh, it was restructured, showing how it goes more about than that, but, uh, you know, always part of that too, and it's just, you know, different parts with different dimensions and instruments, so it's, it's not a complete, 100% like, original fire truck.
Right.
The value is not as much, no.
Right. So I have reached out to the Historical Society. Uh, they convene in May and, uh, would like to at least entertain that opportunity to take it. So, so right now, this fire truck is used once a year in a parade. We do have to pay to have it inspected?
No.
No, we don't inspect it, we just pay for insurance?
No.
Insurance and then, you know, making sure that if something doesn't work, it gets fixed so that it can ride from the school to the fire department?
First fuel.
Yeah. So, um, fire department doesn't want it. Is there any...
Right now, it sits in the village in one of the trailers out back. Where all the fences are shorter, it's, it's, that, that sort of, yeah.
Okay.
Been there for many years.
So, um, doesn't seem to be of, of great value, uh, to us to continue. So I would like, uh, thoughts from the...
We could give it off to charity, it's not, it's not a lot, but there's no point in considering it.
Yeah. So, um, so I would, so what I'm recommending is that we offer it to the Historical Society. I've asked to see whether they are interested or not, and if that's the case, uh, we can make a, a resolution at that time to, uh, give it to them. If not, we can, uh, pass a resolution to, uh, provide it at an auction. Anyone have any thoughts or comments, or we're pretty much in agreement?
I agree with both.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll go about that order, um, is to offer it to the, uh, the Historical Society and then, uh, up for auction. Okay?
Yeah, let's ask them if they can put it on for May so that they get right to it once they...
Right, yes, that's what they said that they would do, right.
Yeah, can I ask, does, um, the fire company, can you house it until then?
We're housing it. DPW is housing it. It, it, yes. So that would actually clear up some space if we got, if we got it out of DPW.
But that's not happening until...
At least May.
At least May, yeah.
Okay. Next?
Next, um, I know we talked about this, the, 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 the beginning of the month.
Yeah.
Uh, generator, the, uh, backup generator for the fire hall was chewed up by mice and had to be operational. Uh, gonna be at least $67,000 to fix it. So we were thinking about possibly paying out insurance if that's something that has to be done, uh, since it is actually a, um, sixty-place, uh, shelter. You know, the, the fire hall is a shelter, so having a generator is key. So, just wanted to hear how the board would like. We'll probably be, yeah, but, yeah, we'll, 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 we'll,
Well, there might, there might also be a possibility, um...
We're talking about a grant for the water department, right?
Yeah. So, well, we're looking at a grant for the water department under LIA, but there's another, there's another grant called HMGP. Uh, that's a program that's open now, that's accepting grants. And so I've asked that we look into getting a generator because it's for infrastructure and hazard mitigation and things like that. So, um, that would certainly fall under hazard mitigation. So maybe we can do two generators with one fell swoop. So we'll look into that.
And any Homeland Security money for generators for the fire department?
Uh, FEMA, no. That, that was...
No, it would be Homeland Security who got the fire truck?
Yeah, no, we've looked, we've looked in there before, and they don't seem to like generators. So it's hazard, it, so now we're trying to look under hazard mitigation to see whether that's a viable option to go to. And we did miss the, well, we were evaluated for the water generator, or wastewater generator for hazard mitigation through FEMA, and they said no. So we tried, we tried that way. So now we'll, we'll go through the state, uh, for that program. Anything else? How many calls this year? One?
Nine so far.
Okay. And how many last year?
Uh, forty-four, I believe it was. Uh, the last call was to Indian Lake, and of course, the coldest day of the year so far, at four in the morning. We froze up all of our trucks that went out.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, but a lot of them froze up. So how do you have to take 1,000 gallons of water, that's negative 20, and at 60 miles an hour for 24 miles, and not freeze something else?
Right, right.
Something else. I really thought of, but, uh, everything was good for the big block. Uh, we did get new tires on the Mini. Uh, those were original tires, and I think that was, oh, six. So they're brand new, that was in the budget, let's find, so we should get there the next year, we send it to the tanker, and do a little watch out for it, but, uh, NFPA states we tires should go more than 10 years. Uh, so that is the next one up, and after that, we've got a party few years of tires.
Okay. Okay. Um...
Just one thing, Jeanette, Matt, I sent you an email about capital projects, which is anything over $20,000. Um, you can take a look at that and let me know, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I talked to Roger, and it was, the roof was probably the, the big one, you know, right outside the leak, but it definitely got some soft pot in it, because it's coming, this past summer, I went up there and nearly sealed up some of the water holes where we were at, and, so that's, that's good. I mean, the building's got reciding, lights are good, I mean, the bones are good in that, that building, so I don't think there's much there that would be over $20,000 for a capital project on that, except for, um, old edition, it'll do it any decent.
Okay. Great. So, um, Crystal and I attended, uh, NICOM's annual meeting this year, and they gave a, a really good webinar about, uh, the administration of fire departments in villages, because those are, those are unique from towns where the fire departments are separate. So, um, there are some challenges in that administration with a volunteer fire department that's still part of the, part of the group. So, um, I would like to ask if there are a couple of folks within your fire department who'd be willing to sit through a webinar with some of the board members? Um, you know, just so that we're all on, on the same page for that.
Sean was in one, right? You guys want Sean to sit there?
Yeah, Sean and Albert and, yeah.
Sean and Mike Tracy also, um...
I have no problem with Mike Tracy, but he is moving.
Okay. So if you would like to ask someone else?
And, and I wouldn't say no, but I would say I probably would.
Have an addition?
Another additional person, because, you know, he is, they've sold their house in Wells, and they are...
Oh, they have sold?
They're, they're one, yeah, they're one on, uh, on West River, it's, it's, it's sold.
Okay.
So, so we'll be moving to...
River House.
River House. Right now, they're actually out for you right now, looking for.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yes, then, yeah, all right. So if you can give us, you know, a couple of folks, it, there's not a limit, but at least two, I would think. And then, um, from the board, I, I know Cindy, uh, should probably do that. I'm happy to do it. Um, if there's anybody else, if there's more than, if there are three or more board members, then we just have to cite it as a, as a special meeting, or we can...
Do like a public workshop.
Yeah, we can do a public workshop, so anybody can see how things are administered. We can use our non-expensive popcorn machine and have refreshments. No, I'm only kidding.
We have microwave popcorn.
Yes. So, um, so that was, that was one thing I had. Um, the other thing in, in looking through some of the administration is to, um, all fundraising activities have to get approved by the board, um, 30 days. So I know that in, in the last meeting that, uh, Trustee Rumsey and I had attended, uh, there was mention of, um, a fundraising activity planned or to be planned or mentioned.
Yeah, that's what I brought up. Maybe, just to talk with you about, uh, it would be the, uh, more of the weekend one.
Okay.
We had one for, uh, Mark Hughes last year, we're gonna probably do that again with another chicken barbecue, because that would be the only one I know of.
So if you can give us a statement...
Yeah, once we, once we get some stuff together, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what the funds would be used, uh, used for, and, you know, what the, what the monies are being raised for. And then I would just ask, um...
A lot of the time, we put stuff like that in the, the ambulance fund, for other firefighters, our firefighters, or if, uh, some entity, something happens, we notice the funds we use, or that, or...
Okay. Okay. All right. And, and may I ask how much was raised for Mark Hughes's family last year? With the chicken barbecue?
I often don't...
Okay, you can get that.
I, I don't, I, I couldn't give you an honest number, I don't, I don't think you...
Well, I won't take a dishonest one.
I don't want to get around there.
Okay, good. All right, that would be, that would be terrific, and, um, and I know I've, uh, you have a prolific grant writer in, uh, in, uh, Ryan. So I did want to comment that, uh, the fire department was awarded SAM grant in the amount of $50,000 for a, uh, wild land, it's called a wild land...
It's a, it's a side-by-side. We, a trailer, so a side-by-side for the trailer, and a insert for the back end of the bed, which is gonna have a pump, uh, pump and reel, as also has a, uh, has a, a stretcher, stretcher, uh, compartment where you can put it. I know that was something that was talked to with the NSC or about possibly with their ambulance. Off-road ambulance they have is, it's a little bigger than they thought, so this may work in conjunction with that and go to call to get it to the railroad trail, bring it out where that is, and then after that.
Right.
Uh, but that will need till next year, like if we, um, I'll, I'll bring that up here, if we, um, and we've been talking about this, is how to be sure, uh, to order things, as we all know, ordering right now is very difficult, takes very long. Um, we were wondering how to go about doing that, because if you order now, you may get it in June. You order in June, which is the next one called a budget to John, you probably will get it till December.
Right. So the way things, the way things are working, just so that the board is aware, this is a SAM grant in the amount of $50,000 to cover the vehicle, the, um, trailer, and any related materials. And so the estimate of all those things together does not exceed $50,000. So the way the SAM grant works is that we have to buy it upfront, there's no leases or renting or anything like that. We have to buy it upfront, and then we get reimbursed. So when this grant was, was discussed, it was over two years ago.
Yeah, we did decide at this moment, yeah.
Right. So, so over, over two years ago, and then, you know, you kind of forget about it, and then all of a sudden, we have a grant. So nothing was put in the budget, it's, so we can't pay for it in this, in this cycle. So we'd have to include that in the budget for, uh, '20, '22, '23. So that's, that's the first thing. Uh, the second thing is, is that there is a small amount of money in the, uh, fire department budget for grants in the amounts of... 4,000, I think there was a little taken out for emergency.
Well, we had, you know, we had, uh...
So 3,500, something like that.
It was like emergency repair slash grants, so there was like 300 or something, $400 dues in there.
So about 3,500, $3,700, uh, is available for the down payment. So I have asked, um, so a question from the fire department was, well, if we could do a down payment, if the board was in agreement, because this indentures the, the village, um, before a budget is approved, um, there's a possibility that the fire department, out of their funds, could put a down payment down, and then the question is, would we be able to reimburse them once the, the SAM grant comes in? And so I have that question out.
Yeah.
Um...
Like, we, we, we've got the funding to fund the side-by-side, which is the thing that takes the longest time, that's the thing forming everything up. We've got those funds, so they're okay here, and we just need to make sure it's...
So what, we just need to make sure that it's refundable to, to, uh, a non-village fund. Right? So, like, you wouldn't give it back to a donor.
But if we were to give it to the village...
Oh, do you...
The village would, would then be the one writing the check.
Yeah, so I, I, we just need to see whether we can do that or not. You know, through legal accounting and, and all those sorts of things. So people are scratching their heads, so I'm not sure if, if it's getting a little confusing. So the, so the thought...
Well, I thought they said that we had to buy it outright, that's where I'm getting confused. About a down payment versus an actual buy it.
Down payment to order it, right? Right. So what we're looking at to, for, from a timing perspective and a cost perspective with our, our current economic environment, is to put a down payment, lock in the price for now, and then, once the budget is approved after June 1st, to pay it off, and then, once everything is paid off, then we would get reimbursed by the SAM grant. So that's, that's the chain of events. The, um, the prices and bids that are coming in are being done by the procurement policy so that they are getting free bids, they'll be reviewed, um, the best value is going to be selected, whether that's the lowest price or the only people who can provide such a, such a vehicle. So I think there's still a little bit more work that needs to be done, and so, um, I'll get you guys copies of, of, of what has been selected, what has been identified with the different bids, and, and put together a resolution on how we should go forward. But I think there's gotta be a little bit more background and information and chatting, because I don't think all the bids are in yet either.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I used to call it around, and there's been companies who say, sorry.
Right, there's some, there's, there's some that won't even...
Some shops aren't even talking, really, don't remember, I can't...
Right. So the, the bottom line is, is that it won't come before June, because we can't pay... Right. So the, the bottom line is, is that it won't come before June because we can't pay for it before June. Um, but, um, whether, whether...
Order ahead of time is the only way to get it at a reasonable time.
Right. So we'll, we'll see how that all falls together. So, so that's the amount of money that we have on a table for a down payment in the village budget if the fire department, um, decides to, to chip into that down payment as necessary, uh, if needed, if they want to, then that's another point. And then I'll take it upon myself to make sure I find out whether it could be reimbursed after the fact.
We, we talked as a fire department, we're, we're willing to do that, you know, if it would be...
Are you willing, are you willing to expend it or are you willing to loan it? That's the question.
Well, hopefully it'll be a loan, you know, it'd just be returned. Once, you, once, you know, it would be a loan to...
So your desire is, is a loan?
Yes. Otherwise, we wouldn't bring, the money would come back to the village or we'd be on point five or whatever.
I would have to check with SAM, with the SAM grant.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
No, no, I understand, I understand. Okay. All right. Any questions for the fire department?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
You.
All right. Um, building and zoning update.
Can we go get Rick?
Is Rumsey available?
Just a minute, I'll get him.
Okay.
For the town elves, there's, they are worse this year than they have in the past three years.
Yeah, what is, what is going on with this storm?
It's, it's, it's the generate, it's the group that's just, there's, there's older group that are great. It's the younger pioneers, I hate to put it that way, but they're here and they need to go to town now.
Yeah, is there, is there some way that we can...
They're bad. They're really bad.
So I, I have asked the sheriff's department to, to, you know, if they can stop whoever they can who are breaking the...
Uh, you know, riding down Elm Lake Road, it's a whole place. There's, there's nothing, you can't, you put, you can't, why not stop it unfortunately? They just need to...
Are there, are there additional signs that we can put on Elm Lake Road?
They do it tonight. They don't see signs tonight.
Yeah, no, they don't. Well, they don't see them during the day either.
No, it's one more sign. But it's, I want to put signs of all those that don't, don't, don't. It's not over.
All right. Oh, Cindy, you've changed.
I did.
Thanks, Matt. Okay. Mister Code Enforcement Officer, zoning officer, if you could give us an update on what's going on in Speculator.
Sure. Well, there have been lots of inquiries on Elm Lake Road, specifically, um, one sixty-one and one sixty-five, that's on either side of Nova Cell Way. Uh, no, no one has actually bought those that I know of, but I've had a lot of inquiries on both. And, uh, one ninety-nine, two oh-one, two oh-three, those are the three lots west of Tom Bazne. Uh, as far as I know, one of those lots is sold.
Oh, great. Those are one acre, those are one acre lots, right?
Yes, I think they are. Yep.
Great.
I've been working with the new owner of Zizer's on what he can do with the property, especially when you take into consideration that there's wetlands behind it. Um, he has some ideas he's been kicking around. I've also been working with the new owners of the Corner Pizza and what will be allowed on that property. Um, they had bought it to move their business from where it was located to there. It was located in Rick Swift's property on the west side of Route eight and thirty, uh, south of the Four Corners. Uh, they started to move things in there and then they backed out and, um, now they don't really know what they want to do with it. They, they thought about making it to, um, bed and breakfasts or two Airbnbs rather, but that, um, would probably not fly with the planning board. They're really kind of, it, it's, right now it's, I think, a non-conforming building. It's way oversized for the lot.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, not to speak out of turn, but I don't think it fits our zoning codes either for recreational areas and things like that.
No, and, and there is, it'd be very easy for the zoning board to say no, just based on the fact that it's a non-conforming building at this point.
Okay.
Um, if they want to put another business there, that's fine. I think they're thinking about maybe selling it. I don't know. Um, and a zoning issue with that same property I just discussed, um, that was, uh, part residential and part business and the residential side, uh, the people who were renting it, uh, really kind of trashed the place. It was trash all over the yard. Um, I delivered a citation for debris and, um, after, uh, repeated attempts to talk to the someone in the residence to no avail, the occupants have since been evicted and cleanup is underway.
Right.
Um, I contacted several individuals about signage like Airbnbs, et cetera. Um, I worked on it.
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the process of, um, getting a quote from the, the codes fellow who, who will consolidate things online for us. So we've given him all the, the backs, back, uh, back regulations that we have and he's supposed to get back with us.
Okay.
And I think that'll, that'll help if we can update, uh, sign codes.
Yeah, I think it will too. It'd be a huge, huge advantage for us. Uh, I would like to also say that I did some research, quite a bit of research on a case up in, um, uh, up north where they're trying to get, they're trying to create zoning for Airbnbs. And, um, they're actually not trying, they did, and it became the, the source of a pretty big lawsuit really. Um, so depending how that turns out, that might be something we want to look into too. I know that, uh, Bob Van Kitch was very concerned about it from the, uh, building standpoint, that many, many people, uh, converting garages and so on. And now, you know, it's...
And you can have a total group perspective.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Great. Um, any, anything else?
Yeah. I worked with the new owner of Lemon Tree, which is now open. He presented his plans to the planning board at my request. Uh, it was kind of a, didn't really need to. It was a business, it's still a business, uh, but he did that nonetheless. And, uh, I'm currently working on one variance and one subdivision. There's a public hearing tomorrow on the subdivision, tomorrow night. Uh, that looks to me like it should probably fly. So that'll be one, two, three, four or five more properties on the sewer and, um, on the water. The variance is on the agenda for tentative approval by the planning board in public hearing at the next planning board meeting. There is plenty of precedence for the variance and we now have letters and other correspondence from neighbors who are in favor of the variance.
And that's the decision.
Sorry?
What's the variance, what's the variance for?
Variance is for, um, building out the front of a lot a little too close to the, to the, um...
Gotcha.
To the...
Oh, sure.
Where, yeah.
Okay. And that's at the next planning board?
That will be discussed tomorrow. Uh, all the documents will be delivered at that point. And, um, the, um, and then, um, if, if it passes tentatively, I think it might, uh, then it would be, it would come up for a public hearing in, in a month.
Okay, great. And do you know offhand how many permits, new permits we have?
Um, outstanding?
New or...
Twenty, twenty-seven.
Okay.
But a lot of those are completed. Uh, and they just haven't gotten their, uh, certificate of compliance or their certificate of occupancy. Uh, just because the inspections haven't been done. I'll be doing those in the very near future. I'm taking the classes right now.
Yep.
And...
Yeah, so I was going to ask how your training is coming.
It's good, I think. I think it's going very well. Um, it's, uh, very interesting. So, and there'll be, uh, this is my first class today. I was told that my counterpart in, um, the town didn't make the first class. I don't know.
Oh, so they've identified someone? They've hired someone?
Yes, they did. Yeah, and he was supposed to be in the class today, um, but didn't make it. He had the dates mixed up.
Ah, okay. All right, good. And then I think the only other matter that we have is, uh, we won't go into details, but there's a violation that's going to be, uh, going to be for the court tomorrow. And at our next meeting, we'll go into executive session and, um, let you know how that has worked out.
That's good. I, I would have been at that meeting tomorrow, at that court appearance, but, uh, I have to be at the, uh, at the planning board meeting.
Yeah, Bob Van Kitch will be, uh, representing us as well as, as well as, um, Laura Darling from, uh, Cor- Cor mio. I think...
That's the lawyer, right?
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, the lawyer will be, uh, representing the village as well.
Okay.
All right, good. Any questions, comments for Rick? Keep up the support. Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Good, good. Sorry, one more question, Matt. Uh, what would the ones on Nova Cell Way, that one sixty-one, now what was the other one?
One sixty-five.
Oh, so it would be the one Elm Lake Road, gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, that's it. Good. All righty. Thank you. And, um, last on the, last on the new business, I did want to make you aware of the New York State, uh, executive budget that's been proposed for the twenty-twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, budget that would start, I believe it's on April Fool's Day. Always appropriate. Um, good news for us, AIM funding, uh, will be maintained at the current level of seven hundred and fifty million dollars to the state. In the past, some of that money has been taken from sales tax. There's been a move to make that all covered by the state itself, so it won't be taking away sales tax from the, the counties and the towns. Um, they are going to maintain the increase that had been proposed in the CHIPS program. So that's a total of five hundred and thirty-eight million. They are, uh, keeping the one hundred million for extreme weather recovery, uh, winter recovery funding and keeping a hundred million for Pave New York. So that's all, that's all good news. Um, as you know, they have allotted an additional five hundred million dollars for drinking water and wastewater infrastructure. And we did apply for a DASNE grant under that and we're waiting to hear back. Hopefully we'll be able to take advantage of that. There is a new program, uh, for businesses in our area for rural communities called New York Forward. Uh, this is not a grant program, but rather it's a low-interest loan program, which I think will be good for some of the businesses that we have here. I have shared it with them. It's a program to help revitalize smaller and more rural downtowns. And the loan fund is to be used by small businesses, nonprofits and small residential landlords. So I think that there could be an opportunity to help out there. Again, I mentioned that we are looking, uh, at an opportunity to try and get grant monies through HMGP. And that program is open at the present time, so we'll see if we can qualify for that. And these funds, um, support mitigation planning and long-term hazard mitigation measures that enhance the state's resiliency posture, avoid loss of life and reduce damages to improve properties. So I, I think those generators should be able to, uh, go under there. All right, um, any other new business? Nothing? All right, um...
Public comment?
Public comment? The floor recognizes Shorty Hoffman, resident of Speculator.
I'm at Route thirty between Speculator and Wells. Uh, like, I was in on that months ago and I was told that the contracts were being awarded, just, you want to show them to the start.
Uh-huh.
And they're gonna show, show them like your family bridge, bringing to Speculator.
We would take that.
They, they need to be done.
It does.
Horrible.
We're, we're due, so, okay.
I'm at, I'm at time down there.
Was it you?
No, I, I don't, I don't do those.
Any of your kids?
Uh, no. Uh, anyways, the town has a few problems with a particular spot. And I mentioned to them that narrow little trail cameras.
Oh, yeah. Maybe you should put some out.
They're really expensive. If you buy a, they sell batteries and put them there. They work in the wintertime with no problems and everything else. And one, one of them down there, it might make it easier to test the person that stops them there and helps them themselves.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to entertain that thought since this is the second time in a couple of months. Those little figurative trees doing too good of a job with those little, little figurines on our signs, but thank you for that suggestion.
I'm a little player stuff. That, that is one of my tech projects. The fact is that in a couple of years, Speculator will be celebrating its hundredth anniversary that's coming up quick.
Yep.
It's only a couple of years down the road. That fire truck was the perfect factory built fire truck that's known for Speculator ever owned. It was nineteen thirty-six.
But it's been cannibalized since then.
It was reworked as, as they used to have fire with steel bags. And they reworked that truck especially for race day vehicles, when they made to wind choke these for those, for Speculator and whatnot. And then to go down to the fire hall, there's a lot of the trophies in the case down there that that truck once for the road, now help with. But as far as the truck goes, I believe, quite a few years ago, that truck was recommissioned as a fire truck. So it's not a liability as a regular fire truck. It is like a piece of equipment along with...
We pay insurance on it.
Right, and the question was asked way back when it was recommissioned, it would make a difference. It was a liability that goes to Speculator hands by removing a piece, one piece like that, the map aid, the insurance. Everybody knows it, it does not.
Well, we're, we're trying to be, that, that's why we're trying to keep it within the village and offer it to the, to the historical society.
The town doesn't cost the village the nickel. It's second to the town.
No, it does, it does cost. It does cost the village. It costs the village in space. It costs the village in insurance and it costs the village in fuel, which is minimal, although by next summer it should be high. But it, it does, but it does cost Shorty and it, it costs any repairs as well. But thank you for your comments and we'll, we'll put that in.
They've been done by volunteers and I don't think the village has paid for the energy part in the years. But it's set in the trailer also there and probably donated by Price Chopper and stuff like that. This is not even in the village.
Okay.
But anyway, uh, I think it would be a mistake for the village to even, it's part of the history of the village. And people don't care about the history of the village and, you know, really.
Okay.
Anyway, that's, in my opinion, that's not only citizens, but former, former members and whatnot. And, uh, for our office, the historical society, you know, probably the historical society have historically been, uh, our office, the historical society, and, you know, you see, there are no, there are facilities there, possibly making the town life, you know, available.
Well, it's gonna be discussed by the historical society in May. So we're not, we're not doing anything for a couple of months, so...
But as far as the thing happening in, uh, in the M P, because it's been modified somewhat, it was modified for...
Well, Shorty, we're not gonna go through the, the history of it now, but your, your comments will be noted, okay? Um, any other public comments?
I mean, one last thing, that, that everybody says the fire tower adds no liability to the village and, like I said, it's, the truck adds no liability because it's not using...
Different, different insurance, different liability.
But it doesn't, it doesn't respond to the fires or, there's no liability...
It's a, different, there are apples and oranges.
It's a piece of equipment, not, like, just one, anyway.
So it's noted. Okay, yep. Okay, anything else from the board? Mark?
Make a motion to, uh, end the meeting.
Okay, uh, and it's eight thirty-two, eight thirty-two. Second? Jim, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
There, thanks.
Thank you.